This meeting has been called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notes of this meeting was provided for the Home News Tribune, The Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 4th, 2023, and was posted on Borough Hall website at www.hbborough.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. In addition, in addition, notes of this meeting via Zoom was emailed to the Home News Tribune, The Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on May 12th, 2023, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hbborough.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and on May 12th, 2023, has been remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exit to my left and right of council chambers. Dalton, can you lead us into pleasure religions?
Our apologies to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Foster?
Yes.
Councilwoman Anderson. Councilwoman George?
Here.
Councilwoman Hale?
Here.
Council President Hersch?
Here.
Councilwoman Ken Chouhan? Councilwoman Heston?
Here.
Borough Attorney Schirr?
Well, I'm sorry, here.
Any questions on the agenda by council members? Okay. No questions on the agenda. Now we're gonna move on to awards and presentation. And I have a presentation for National EMS Week. I'm gonna read it and then present it to you, Marley. And it reads, whereas emergency medical service is a vital public service, and whereas the members of the emergency medical team are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improve the survival and the recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services have grown to fill the gap of providing important treatment out of care, out of hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency service system consists of first responders, emergency medical technician, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency room nurses, emergency physician, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of the emergency medical service team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours in specialized training and continued education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Medical Emergency Service Week. And whereas Highland Park Police Department, Highland Park Fire Department, and Highland Park First Aid Squad are vital part of the Borough first responders, providing emergency medical service for thousands of people each year. The Highland Park First Aid Squad will be holding an open house on Sunday, June 11th, and invite members of the public and potential new members to the First Aid Squad to participate. Now therefore, I, LC Foster, Mayor of the Borough of Highland Park, do hereby proclaim this week, May 21st to 27th, 2023, as Emergency Medical Service Week, and I encourage our community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. And witness therefore, and to my set by my hand on the 16th day of May, 2023. Marley? And councilmembers?
George, you wanna come down and say your?
She said she can't, 'cause I saw someone I know was on the.
Have you moved a presenter?
Congratulations.
I think presenter makes a difference.
Just briefly, the reason more of the fire department is here is they're doing what they're supposed to do, as the mayor said. They're across the street doing trading. And I think that's a terrific thing. It shows their engagement. We actually have more volunteers coming on board than is finishing his training to get certified tonight. So congratulations, chief. Great job. You're bringing them together, gathering them up, and we look forward to board. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me, mayor, if you'll remind me one second of a general word that the Zoom has an issue, and I think I know how to fix it.
Sure, all right, and we did anticipate for.
I know, and I appreciate that. I saw someone I recognized on the panels, and I asked, "How does it look?", and they told me it was an issue. So I'd like to try to.
Steve Jow had the same issue when he rolled out iPhone.
Starting with the iPhone, so great.
Natasha, would you mind coming up here for a second? Apologies, everybody.
Just a little technical difficulties. We're trying to work through it.
I could see it working here, but then. I'm gonna show you between panels, which you are. You can draw it up between your legs, officially, so. Go to the log screen. It's bottom thread. What's that mean?
You're good.
It's working?
Yeah.
You're back on track. We are?
Natasha seems to think it is, so that's a problem.
I'm logged in as a viewer on this computer.
Apologies, I didn't hear what it means.
And so I think I'm seeing what the public's seeing.
That's okay. Now we can continue. We need to work out the kinks. So as soon as we work them out, we'll just continue on with the meeting. We'll get better at it. And for now, I'm gonna do a recognition of the mayor's teen advisory council for their spring fundraising 2023. And I'll just give you a little bit about these diligent teenagers and what they have done for our town. For a few years now, the mayor teen advisory council has held annual fundraisers for different Highland Park area causes. This year, the teen leaders decided to fundraise for Highland Park First Aid Squad and set an ambitious goal of $1,400 so the squads could purchase a new chair, a new stair chair, a piece of equipment that helps transport patients safely up and downstairs. In late April, the teen leaders closed their fundraising efforts and celebrated the fact that they had actually raised $2,800 for the First Aid Squad. Bravo! Thank you, teen leaders, Anna Yeh Kaleel and Andrew Dalton, those who are here tonight. They led the effort and rallied their fellow teen leaders to reach this remarkable result. Please join me in giving them a round of applause, a well-deserved round of applause. But I want to single out Andrew. For his take no prisoner attitude for making this fundraiser happen. As one of his many activities, he championed to reach out to Highland Park resident Elliot Ostro, partner at the law firm of Epstein and Ostro LLP, and was in the largest single amount contribution of $1,300 donated by the law firm. Again, another big round of applause for Andrew. And thank you Highland Park residents and professional fundraiser Jen Corbin, who offered to teach the teen leaders tips on how to succeed at fundraising and to help them start their campaign. And to Arby Loretta, president of the Highland Park First Aid Squad, who attended the mayor teen advisory council meeting last month, and thank the teens for their remarkable efforts. Thank you as well to all the members of the teen advisory council, Anna, Andrew, Emma, Anya, Anim, Ellen, Finn, Kai, Kaylee, Miriam, Plaka, Sean, and Xena, for their exceptional effort to make this campaign a success. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And I would just like for them to come up and for people to see the remarkable work that these teens have been doing. They were here last month, but I want them to come up and to get a picture with the teens. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Now I'm told the audio's not. Video's working, but audio isn't working, so I'm trying to switch to the [inaudible].
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your turn.
And just a few minutes. We're having some technical difficulties.
And we did, what do you mean? We tried it four times, and I apologize.
It happens, it happens. Something, though, we definitely have to go through the growing pains. Testing, testing. Can you hear me out there? Somebody typing if you can hear us. Did anybody respond?
I'm getting a dot, dot, dot.
Oh, okay.
Let's see.
So somebody's coming through. So I guess they're hearing us.
Sound now. Thank you for bearing with us.
Appreciate it. It's growing pains. It's definitely growing pains. Number six is approval of minutes. Motion to approve minutes as distributed. So move. And that's from November 22nd, 2022, in the executive session, December 6th, 2022.
How's second?
Roll call.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hersch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Heston?
Yes.
And now I'm gonna start the council reports. Councilmember George.
Thank you, mayor. I have a brief report. And thank you for the proclamation regarding EMS service. As we talked about, the trade professionals and volunteers, even the volunteers go through a lot of training. It's also Police Officer Week. Chief Abrams noted several ceremonies to recognize officers during this nationwide recognition. As far as the library goes, the new executive director, Mike Bobic, spent his first week in the library going over construction plans with the library architect, administration, and contractor. The staff is already planning expansion of remote services and planning for some of the disruptions that are going to occur when the project starts. We're still looking at several alternatives in mind for place to store and possibly have access to the holdings. One of the ideas that the board of trustees discussed last night with Director Bobic was doing a selection. If we have reduced space, we do a selection of the most popular turnover. And then we have substantial electronics in virtually all of holdings available through the LMX system. The library board last night adopted a revised lending policy for its electronic devices, including its laptops, mobile hotspots, and chargers to make the devices much more available to all our residents who may require some electronic access but with limited resources. Finally, the library rain garden was installed during the past week along the eastern lane wall, which is closest to Raritan Avenue. Highland Park volunteers contributed to the project and to the planting as well. And the board of trustees actually took a moment last night before the meeting to tour the installation and acknowledge all the volunteers who contributed to the project. Thank you. With regard to the police department report, a reminder that the changing of the flow of traffic at Irving School on Central is going to be changing. It'll change the worst of the flow of traffic on Central Avenue from South 11th to South 10th. We're hoping that change will get to going to place for a couple of weeks before the end of the school year so we can get used to the pattern. However, the Department of Transportation and its infinite wisdom has determined that all one-way designations, regardless of where they are, have to be approved by D O two. So that we may be slowed down a little bit, but the chief and the administrator are very aggressively pursuing it, so hopefully we can get that one-way designation of an entire block, which is critical to the entire infrastructure that Central New Jersey has dedicated in time for us to make our schools safer. Highland Park's First Arrive Program Officer Duty with Officer Brian O'Meara, our CIT, is scheduled for this coming Monday, the program will start. And we talked about it in the last couple of meetings, where actually the program started on Monday, and our first duty starts with our tour on this coming Monday. On the next agenda will be a resolution, which we are verifying through the federal assembly website, which Councilman Hale and I discussed, which supports bipartisan legislation in the Invest in Police program, which actually sounds exactly like the Arrive program, but on a very large scale. The program would fund grants targeted to small police departments to provide similar community-based services to make contacts between police response and alternate care avenues possible. So we're following that. With regard to the fire department, as we said, the chief reports that one of our graduates is just about ready for certification, which means he'll be on duty. And two others are moving forward with the process. They're actually in training tonight. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Foster.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, everyone. I have a report tonight that is not brief, but sharing a lot of good information and is also important information. So I usually start my reports off with a brief mention of the ongoing food shopping and transportation assistance available through the Department of Community Services. Recently, some questions have popped up about those services, so I consulted with Kim McCrae, our community services director, and our borough administrator, Terry Hooper. And tonight, I'm happy to share some more details than I usually do in order to just hopefully provide clarity on all those issues that have come up. So first, about the community center fee. The grocery store rides are offered as one of the many, many services provided to residents who pay the $20 annual membership fee to the community center. But just please know that if someone wants to participate in groceries trips and cannot pay that one-time annual $20 fee for all the services the community center provides, they will never be turned away. They will be accommodated. There is a hardship exception. We don't turn anyone away. And everyone will get to where they need to. Next, in addition to the regularly scheduled weekday trips to local grocery stores, there are night and weekend trips that can be made available depending on level of interest. So far, we haven't received any requests for night or weekend trips, but for anyone who may be interested, please reach out to the community center with your request. Also, please note that the ride service does do pickups and drops off at residents' homes. It does not just depart from and return to the community center. And lastly, while we schedule an hour for food shopping, rest assured, if anyone needs a bit more time, the bus will not leave until everyone has finished shopping and slightly back on board. Borough staff are here to help. You know, we're providing these rarely scheduled trips. There's also a number of additional trips provided through the week for individuals with special circumstances or who just don't fit, whose schedule doesn't fit in with the regularly scheduled trips that are provided. I think, I know the staff member who provides the individual transportation or for smaller groups, they've made over 1,000 trips since the start of the year for various. The transportation services are not just for the grocery store services. They also include medical trips. But, you know, we're getting people to where they need to go. So we're here to help. If you need assistance with grocery store transportation, please contact the community center at 732-819-0052. Moving on to some other community services updates. We've got a lot of exciting programming coming up. First of all, I just wanted to mention that Middlesex County will be hosting a number of free birthday celebrations for county residents who are turning 90 years of age or older this year. Celebration for Highland Park residents will be on Wednesday, May 24th, from 11 A.M. to 1 P.M. at the Skyway Senior Center. There will be some residents from other towns as well. All seniors can bring one guest, and lunch will be provided. You should contact the Middlesex County Office of Aging or our Community Services Department for more information. Next is the Memorial Day Parade. That will be on Monday, May 29th, beginning in New Brunswick at 10:30 a.m. We'll be crossing the bridge at around 11:30 a.m. and proceeding up Raritan Avenue to the Doughboy Monument, where a concluding ceremony will take place. One day later, on Tuesday, we'll have a community health fair, May 30th, from 11 a.m. to 2 p.m. at the community center. Screens that will be offered include blood pressure, pulse, BMI, blood density, blood sugar, and skin scan cancer screenings. Fasting is not required to participate in these screenings. Last, I have a list of community services programming coming up. It's the Senior Prom. Seventeenth Annual Senior Prom will be held Tuesday, June 13th, from 4 p.m. to 7 p.m. at the community center. There will be dinner, dancing, and entertainment. I attended the Mother's Day luncheon today, and let me tell you, they put on a fine show. It was great food, great entertainment. And they are really knocking out of the park there, the Community Services Department, with these programs for our seniors. Okay, moving on to some updates in the arts world. So I've been talking about the yarn art installation on the Albany Street Bridge project that the Arts Commission had been planning. Well, that finally happened, and happy to report that it was a huge success. The yarn art installation is now up on the Albany Street Bridge, and people are loving it, getting a lot of positive feedback, a lot of cue cards and love written in yarn on the fence over the Albany Street Bridge. A picture of it is even Middlesex County's photo of the week on the county's Instagram account. And we're happy, and we're very proud of the work that the Arts Commission has done on this project. This weekend, on Sunday, it will be Porch Fest. So May 21st, at Sunday, from noon to 6 p.m. A number of musicians will be performing at locations throughout town. Check out the Highland Park, New Jersey Porch Fest 2023 Facebook page for the locations and more details. And last on my list for my report is the upcoming Queer Candy Pride Music Festival, that will be held on Sunday, June 11th, on North Fourth Avenue, right by Peos. There's gonna be music all day, dance party, contests, bouncy house, and children's activities, food trucks and vendors. I'm gonna be there, so I hope to see you all there. And mayor, that is my lucky report for the night. Thank you.
Awesome report. Thank you. Councilmember Ken Chouhan, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. I do just announcement again, since I didn't see any applications come through for the rent control board. You know, we did adopt the ordinance end of last year, and we need to fill three positions, and we want to get this up and running. We need to formally have a first meeting, appoint some, you know, the chairs, vice chairs, all of those titles as well, too. So we need a tenant alternate, owner occupied, regular member, and an owner occupied alternate. It's a fairly small group, so the alternates are important, an important role. So please, if you yourself or you know someone, maybe your neighbors are interested, please have them fill out the volunteer form on the Borough's website. And that's my report, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilmember Hale, do you have a report?
I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I wanted to say thank you very much for doing the EMS recognition week. My son is an EMT, and so I know how hard they work. Even the volunteers really do some amazing work. So thank you very much for that recognition of well-deserved work. I also wanted to say thank you to Councilwoman George. We are exploring this potential federal legislation, which would bring much-needed money to local departments like ours in a variety of different ways. And so Congressman Gottheimer and Congressman Menendez have been initially very involved in this, and we'll continue to work with them. But thank you, Phil, for that as well. Okay, a couple announcements. The Highland Park Conservative Temple is having a diaper drive and baby wipe drive, which is May 16th to May 24th. All proceeds are gonna go to the Central Jersey Diaper Bank, and they're particularly focusing on baby wipes, baby wipes and formula cans. So if you have extra baby wipes or formula cans, you can drop them off at the Highland Park Temple. That's 201 South Third between May 16th and May 24th, and they'll bring them over to the diaper drive. So that's a good event. I also wanted to say thank you very much to everyone who helped manage and organize the annual street fair. I'm not sure if everybody else felt like this, but it really felt to me like a pre-pandemic event. Like it was one of the, the first times that sort of everything felt a little bit on the normal side. But it was certainly one of our biggest events in a long time. That takes an enormous amount of work and effort, certainly by the Main Street staff, but also the Main Street volunteers for making it a huge success. And I think it was certainly a great success this year. So thank you to everybody for putting that together. As always, I would like to encourage everyone to come to the farmer's markets on Friday afternoons. It's already running almost full steam, and it's gonna continue to grow over the summer. So please make sure to visit the farmer's market on Fridays. And then in addition, after that, make sure to visit one of the permanent stores on the avenue. Friday's farmer market is not a yes-and. It's a yes-and, not an either-or kind of day. So make sure you go to the farmer's market and to the other events. Lots of opportunities on Friday afternoon. Have a volunteer opportunity. Next week is Planting Day. So you can come out and help Highland Park look even more beautiful than it does. Planting Day is Thursday, May 25th, from 3 to 7 p.m. and Friday, May 26th, from 11 a.m. to 6 p.m. All you have to do is go over to the Main Street offices near the Welpowitz Pavilion during those times, and they'll have planting materials, and they'll send you on your way to go plant those big planter bollards up and down Raritan Avenue. So if you'd like to get your hands dirty, this is a great way to do it. This year, as we've done in the past with the holiday, the planters are gonna be moving up to Woodbridge Avenue as well. And that's done through the help of the NPP grant, which is also going really well into year two. As a reminder, the Borough receives money at the NPP grant and has been doing a lot of things, not just planting, but also helping businesses with facade improvements and new tree planting, permanent tree planting. This year, we're concentrating on improving Karzi Park, also known as Mollymuck Park. We've added electricity, new fencing, trash cans, and in the coming months, we're gonna be meeting with neighbors to develop ideas and thoughts about the park. So please stay tuned. So please stay tuned for that, of how we can make Karzi Park and Mollymuck Park a much improved place. Tonight, on the agenda, there are two sort of important economic development issues. The first one is an extension of our conditioner development agreement with the Tantliff Group for working on Track Day. This is exciting because it means that they're making progress, right? If they weren't making progress, we wouldn't be extending this. But they are making significant progress. And the additional time under the conditional agreement is a reflection of that. So it's also a reflection of working with the Tantliff Group. So far, they've been excellent partners with the borough through this redevelopment process. So that's an important one. And then the second one, of course, is the redevelopment plan for the supermarket lot. As we've discussed many times, the goal of this plan is quite simply to ensure that a supermarket is part of any redevelopment activity at the supermarket site. In essence, this locks in the supermarket as part of the project. And we believe that this redevelopment plan in place, there'll be a number of potential operators willing to move forward on this. I wish you could promise a time and a date that we will have a supermarket, but I feel very comfortable with this, that we're moving in the right direction. So I think that's an important thing. And as always, I'd like to thank the Borough Professionals, Joe Baumann, Nick Strasser, Bruch Koch, Chris Casenza, Jim Constantine, and of course, Terry Overe for their work on all of these projects. So one last thing about the supermarket that is required in the redevelopment that we're talking about tonight. But it is also possible that other things, in addition to a supermarket, could be there, including additional housing on the site. This is a possibility, not a requirement. But if new housing comes, I want to make it very, very clear that all housing in Highland Park now must meet the Affordable Housing Ordinance, which dictates 15% of all rental and 20% of all sale units are in the affordable range. That is a commitment this council and mayor made, and one that we're sticking with for all projects moving forward in Highland Park. So no affordable housing, no housing. That's our stance. And this is an important one, because when we keep up with our affordable housing obligation, when we make sure that we have that type of mix, we are never gonna be subject to builder's remedy agreements again, which can dictate what happens in town. So with that, we've got some good stuff coming, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Council President Hirsch?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Matthew Hirsch. I show the Public Works Committee. And thank you and hello to everybody at home, and in person. The Environmental Commission has been awarded a grant by ANJAC, that's the Association of New Jersey Environmental Commissions, and the LS RPA Foundation, that's the Licensed Site Mediation Professional Association, for $1,050 to upgrade a boardwalk in the meadows and to build another observation deck in the meadows. The Environmental Commission has built and maintained a loop trail in the meadows, which is located at the southern end of South Fifth Avenue, next to the DPW building. So it's beautiful down there. It's going to get more beautiful. Meters, the meter replacement project, just an update. As of April 30th, 1,025 meter exchanges have been completed with an additional 15 that were scheduled at that time. And assuming those are completed. There are 2,042 meters remaining on the list to be changed. It has been approved to, and 700 LCD off meters have been approved and in place of regular meters. National Meter, the company that is installing the meters, is asking customers if they prefer an alternate model at the time of making the meter appointment. And National Meter notes the address, and will inform these customers when the meters arrive in stock. Earth Day, I did just want to just echo Councilman Hale's comment about the street fair, but specifically Sustainable Highland Park's annual Earth Day Fair was a huge success. Our Earth Zone on North Third had lots of information on electric vehicles, e-bikes, native seedlings giveaways, rain gardens, electric lawn equipment, and tax credits and rebates from the Inflation Reduction Act. And residents were able to meet with a Highland Park beekeeper and learn about vermicom posting, worms. Thank you to all who spent a few hours downtown to learn more sustainable ways to live on this planet and to be good stewards of the environment. Then, on May 13th and 14th, thank you to Sustainable Highland Park for their free giveaway of native and pollinator plants over Mother's Day weekend. Happy Mother's Day to all who celebrate. Community distribution, so this is a free, a community distribution of free native and pollinator plants to Highland Park residents through the boroughs. Park Partners Grant. So how's that for everything coming together? That was really, really cool to really watch come to fruition. The, and Andrew is no longer here, but thank you to the National Honor Society. The mayor and I attended the National Honor Society's chapter at the Highland Park High School for their family food competition. And I mentioned it, but it was a really amazing event. And then just, I'm not sure, Jason, I don't think I'm stepping on your toes on this, but just mark your calendar, fireworks July 2nd.
Oh, sure, save it for next time. But by all means, give everyone in advance heads up. Like, everyone knows the Fourth of July fest. Huge event, so thank you for.
Thank you. And I apologize. And that's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Borough Administrator Report?
No report this evening, but I do want to thank you all for bearing with the early moments of our meeting. And those of you at home, I'm glad we got things up and running.
Okay, Borough Attorney Report?
I have no report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. And now I'm gonna go to my report, and it's gonna tap into a little bit of what was said by many of my fellow councilmembers. I want to thank Councilman Hale. He mentioned about the street fair and how robust it was. It truly was robust. This year, this past May 7th, it was really a round, a rounding success. And I want to thank Main Street Highland Park. And they had advised me that there was 150 vendors and exhibitors, which included 50 Highland Park business and community groups. There were over 600 adults and children in the 5K race and 80 community members who volunteered for the race. Thank you all. A few thousand, which raised a few thousand dollars for Highland Park High School programs. Rebecca also noted that the company that managed all the logistics for the street fair estimated a roughly 15,000 people that visited our street fair this year. That was awesome, and that's what Councilmember Hale talked about earlier. So kudos to us for the street fair this year. We're looking to make it bigger and much more robust next year. Happy to share with you that we had two, we have two ribbon cutting. One was done at Metta Spa at the street fair Sunday, May 7th. Council President Hirsch represented the borough, and he was happy to cut the ribbon and to open, welcome this new business into town. On, we're gonna be having another ribbon cutting at Blenz Cafe on May 28th. And I'm looking, I'm looking forward to the events and to celebrate a new business in town, to highlight them, and to showcase what we have to offer here in Highland Park. So I'm looking forward to making sure that we post these new businesses on social media. We all should, because people will come to town to keep our downtown vibrant. And Global Grace Cafe and Pink Diamond Beauty on Raritan Avenue, and also Soma Yovaya Garden on Woodbridge Avenue is also here. So I want to include everyone to please go to these shops in town, even if we're not highlighting them right now. But please, go to shop in these stores and to keep business on Main Street vibrant. Plenty of notable upcoming events. For example, we have, looking forward to Juneteenth in June, Pride Month, and Caribbean Heritage Month. All these flag races are gonna be coordinated by the Human Relations Commission. So a lot of exciting things are coming next month. There will also be an open house of the First Date Squad on June 11th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., coordinated by members of the mayor-advisal team council. And finally, finally, let me join, let me join in by welcoming Library Director Mike Bottish. We have a meeting scheduled to meet with him to talk about plans for where the library, the temporary plans for the library, and that's due tomorrow. So I'm looking forward to that, because the library is one of the most utilized services that we have in town. And we want to make sure that while the renovations are happening, that we have a place where our library will, our library will continue, and people can access materials that they need from the library and the resources. Because the library provides a lot of computer research for people to fill job applications and do all kinds of research projects. So it's a well-needed service. So we're looking forward to find a temporary home for the library in that conversation. I'm gonna keep, and Councilmember George is gonna be also very much involved in this whole temporary transition of our library. Today, I attended a program by, by Middlesex County. It's called Middlesex County Behavioral Health. And they're looking not only into the Arrive Safely program. The governor was there, and he spoke about Arrive Safely. But he also spoke, which most importantly, about more funding for the program and extending the program statewide. Highland Park was happy to be one of the three pilot programs, three towns that piloted the program, Woodbridge, Edison, and Highland Park, which is awesome. But now they're talking about it's getting a lot more funded, because everyone is really happy that this program is in place.
Excuse me, Mayor, we ran into another technical glitch. I apologize.
Welcome to Zoom. Please, how? Call by the pound sound again.
Lockdown for some reason. They locked the door.
It's okay. It's technical, but you will work it out. Don't be upset, we'll work it out. No, and we did know, we noticed that this may happen, and unfortunately, it is happening. But by the time we get through this, we'll be pros. And it won't happen anymore.
The meeting ID is invalid. Please enter your meeting ID while the pound sounds.
Are we? It's classic coming.
Welcome to Zoom. Please, nine, two.
Do you know when I got called?
Nine, five, seven, four. Nine, six, six, six. You are in the meeting now. Recording in progress.
Okay, technology is a wonderful thing. We're gonna get it together.
Oh, not yet. Oh, no, I thought.
Testing.
I'm promoting you.
It's flashing green, I'm telling you.
Won't let me.
Joy that candleicious hashtag. It says, Terry.
It says, Jordan's what?
There we go.
Okay.
Okay.
And then you need to spotlight me.
Test, test.
Testing, testing, one, two, three.
It's back.
It's back?
Yep, we're back.
Shout out to Rebecca.
We're going, we're going through growing pains. You know, it's one of those things that we, in a few months from now, it'll be a distant memory that we have had this, so.
Wait, I guess.
Okay.
Mayor. Now, okay. You're frozen up on the Zoom, though, which is concerning.
Well, we're back.
I believe the audio should be working, I'm not sure.
I thought it said audio is working.
Okay, we're good.
Okay. As I was saying today.
You're gonna have a heart attack.
Technical glitches, it happens. We'll work through this, too. I attended Middlesex County Mental Health Meeting today, and Governor Murphy was there, and he was talking about the Arrive Safely program. And initially, it rolled out in Highland Park, Edison, and Woodbridge. Now, it's for the success rate that they have seen, which has been an 85% success rate. They are now expanding it. They're gonna fund the program and expand it throughout the state. I cannot wait, because we need more of these programs all over. It saves lives, it calms peoples down, and people go home, and everyone is safe and secure. So I can't say enough of how much more funding we need for this program. I also, Department of Community Service had a program this morning, and it was on scam, ID theft, romance scam, lottery scam, grandparent scam, postal scam. And our Highland Park Police Department attended. So was the Postmaster General, he was there. And Department of Communities, Consumer Affairs, they were there to do the presentation and to pass out packets of information. And should you receive suspicious phone calls, email, text message, or scary phone calls saying that your grandchild or a family member is in trouble, before you make any kind of money or payments to anything, call your police department. They'll be able to direct you to the appropriate persons. So we want to avoid all these scams and keep everyone safe. Last but not least, do we have another council meeting before next month? I think we all forgot to mention that Memorial Day is coming up. And.
Jason mentioned.
Oh, okay. I think that, Jason, you said a lot this is council meeting. There was a lot going on in your bucket. But please, do come out. We normally meet at the Fire and Police Department about 8:30 in the morning. Please do come out and to honor those who serve. And that's my report. Thank you.
I think, I think we did, I thought when you said we forgot to mention that we start one meeting a month next month.
Yes.
June 20th. Yeah.
Yes, our next meeting, thank you so much, Council Pres, Councilwoman Johna.
Well, I know, it's only one, summer break.
It's only one, right. We're going to, our summer season starts next month, and we will have our first meeting on the 20.
The 20th of June.
The 20th of June will be our next council meeting. So please put that in your calendar. We'll be putting it up on public notice as well. And now it's time for our first public comment. Each person is allowed a 21 minutes, three minutes maximum for speaker. Comments are limited to items on the agenda. If you want to speak on an item that is not listed, please do so at the second public comment later in this meeting. The borough will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes has lapsed. She will give you a warning when 30 seconds still remaining. I may, I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided or if the statement is absurd, offensive, or irrelevant. Comments from members of the public attending the meeting in person will be heard first, followed by members of the public attending via Zoom. If you're interested in speaking, please step up to the microphone, raise your hand. Step up to the microphone for those who are here. Raise your hand for those who are on Zoom and press star nine on your phone pad or by selecting raise hand, or you have two options. Press star nine, star nine, or raise your hand on Zoom, so we can see you. Please begin by telling us your name, your last name, and your address. The borough administrator will announce the first speaker if there is one on Zoom.
Hi, my name is Nicole Weins. I live at 318 South Third Avenue. I'm actually here tonight representing Raisa's Cultural Center. There is an ordinance up for first reading on the lease, and I will keep this very brief. All I want to say is thank you for your consideration. As a resident of Highland Park who has been doing programming in Highland Park, I've lived here for over 10 years. I've been doing programming here in arts programs especially for 20 years now. And we really appreciate this opportunity to be able to expand access to a public building, to expand programming for the residents of Highland Park, and also to bring people here to continue to increase the diversity, the arts, the culture, the ecocultural programs, and also part of what we do is history, so that as well. I just want to say thank you for Council President Hirsch, Borough Administrator Terry Hooper, and the Borough Attorney, Mr. Thank you for your work on this, for your support, and also to all of the council members and the mayor as well. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I don't see any hands raised at this time from our Zoom friends.
Okay, we have nobody else in the public. So now we're gonna move on to ordinance requiring second reading.
Ordinance number 232071, ordinance of the Borough Council of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, New Jersey. County of Middlesex, New Jersey authorizing the adoption of 420, 424 Raritan Avenue Redevelopment Plan pursuant to the Local Redevelopment and Housing Law. pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. NJ SA 40A12A-1 EdSec was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavit of publication on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
A public hearing is... it's public hearing, and it's now time for the public to hear on this ordinance. If you wish to speak, please come up to the microphone. If you're on Zoom, raise your hand or press star nine.
Mayor, I don't see any comments on mine or yours.
A motion to accept or reject?
Motion to accept.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Jo-Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puscon.
Okay, say a few words first. I just want to thank the mayor, Council President, Councilman Hale for your leadership on this, and all the professional staff, and Terry, of course. Thank you for all your hard work for making this happen. This is the most significant step that the municipality can take to guarantee that we have a new supermarket in town. Yes.
I couldn't agree with you more. Yes, 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 yes. 12, the ordinance number 23, that's 2073, and ordinance amended by the Supplement and Revised General Ordinance, Borough of Highland Park Chapter.
In ordinance to amend supplemental revised general ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter V11, traffic was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavit of publication on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Public hearing, it's now time for public hearing on this ordinance. If you would like to speak, come up to the microphone. If you're on Zoom, press star nine or raise your hand. Motion to adopt or reject?
Submove.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman George?
This is the final reading for the ordinance changing the traffic on Central. Again, as I know, DOT will have to approve it, but we are allowed to pass and submit it to them, so I vote yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Jo-Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puscon?
Yes.
Ordinance required, first reading.
Ordinance number 232072, ordinance authorizing Raisa's Cultural Center pertaining to 20 River Road, Act 502, Lot 6, also known as the Eugene Young Environmental Education Center, has been introduced and ready in the Development and Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Allergies are really messing with me this evening. Motion to adopt or reject?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call. Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes, and Nicole said everything I was going to say. Thank you so much for stepping up and being an environmental steward and a great neighbor. Thank you, Nicole.
Councilwoman Kim Jo-Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puscon?
Yes.
A consent agenda resolution. Motion to adopt or reject the following consent agenda items, 14A through 14H.
Submove.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Jo-Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puscon?
Yes.
Okay. Appointments, Arts Commission, Rukia, runoff, runoff, alternate two to the Arts Commission. Motion to confirm?
Submove, second.
Roll call.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Jo-Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puscon?
Yes.
Now it's time for the second public discussion. Total time allotted is 21 minutes. Three minutes maximum per speaker. Borough Clerk will monitor the timing and indicate when three minutes has elapsed. She will give you a warning when 30 seconds is remaining. I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement or if the statement does not adhere to the three minutes provided or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Comments from the members of the public attending the meeting in person will be heard first, followed by those attending on Zoom. Speak into the microphone when you come up to speak. Those who attended on Zoom, please press star nine or press the raise hand on your keyboard. Please press star six to unmute yourself. Okay. Please begin by... you can step up to the microphone beginning by providing us your first and last name, as well as your address.
Those of you at home, now's your chance to raise hand. Mayor, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay. Borough Administrator please... she did that, sorry. Okay, now we move on to number 17. Does anyone want a five-minute recess?
No.
I didn't think so. Number 18 is a work session. No formal action will be taken, but we're going into our work session. And number 19, we have executive session. 19A, Resolution Authorizing... I guess we don't do it now, Resolution Authorizing... oh, Resolution Authorizing Executive Session Discussion. Motion to adopt resolution... we do this one. Motion to the 25... 523-140 for a Resolution Authorizing Executive Session Discussion. First reading, health benefits negotiation into Middlesex County Gif Insurance Fund.
Second.
Motion?
Motion.
I motion first.
Roll call.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Jo-Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puscon?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to adjourn and go into executive session.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
See you all on the June 20th at 7:00 p.m. and on Zoom as well. And hopefully by then, all our little keeps will be worked out on Zoom. Thank you all for coming. We have a whole month to figure it out.